I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Desiree, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Could y'all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming out tonight. Couple of announcements, and we've got a proclamation or two. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, here in the chambers. We have a notice of potential quorum, a quorum of the Raton City Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Extraterritorial Commission may attend the zoning 101 and commission workshop on Wednesday, October 18th, 2023, from 8:00 to 12:00, here in the chambers. And for those commissioners that are going, if you could please let Mr. Nolan know, so he can get a head count, we'd appreciate it. This time, we do have a proclamation. Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2023. Whereas the month of October 2023 has been declared as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly, and whereas family violence results from the use of force or threat to achieve and maintain control over others in intimate relationships, and abuse of power in society fosters battering by perpetuating conditions which condone violence, and only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas the Raton alternatives to violence and other agencies throughout the city of New Mexico are working together to provide effective intervention, prevention, community education, and support to build a nonviolent family environment in our city. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and witness whereof I appear to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 26th day of September 2023. Y'all like to come? Beautiful. Come on in. Come on in. Don't be bad. Don't be bad. Would you like to say anything?
Appreciate it. We're off to a really good start for our events in October. I asked deeply for Raton's support when we first started talking about the walk, and we've got a record number of corporate donations, not even close. It blew away almost double what our normal average high is. So a lot of that's due to my staff. They've done a great job hitting the streets and knocking on doors, and we're off to a good start. Our walk is October the 7th. We really hope for a lot of walkers to come out. We'd like to break that record, too. And it'll start, the registration at 8:30. The walk will be about 9:00. We'll start at Ripley Park, and we'll finish at the thrift store on First Street. So we hope for a good turnout there. The 14th, we have our walk down in Cimarron. They always do a wonderful job down there. And then on the October 21st, we'll have our candlelight vigil at the Shuler Theater. So I invite y'all to come and join us for that. We're gonna have some entertainment. Secondhand's gonna form for us, and there'll be food and such. We have a good time at it. So just want to invite y'all. And again, if you want to walk or thinking about walking, get the pledge sheet. We have them at the office. We have them at the thrift store. Or call us, and we'll give them to you one way or the other. So we really want to have a good turnout for the walk. It's real important for us. As some of you may know, we got a $45,000 cut from the feds, straight across the board. Everybody did, not just us. So that's why it was so important that we have the things you that we're having. Not that we're gonna make up $45,000 on the walk, but put a little dent into it, maybe. So it is really important to us. I really want to thank all the businesses that have stepped up and joined us. It's humbling when you see the numbers. Like I said before, Raton's never let me down. I've been doing this for 35 years. Raton's always been there for me. So just want to thank them and everybody else, and hopefully we'll see you at the walk or the candlelight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and your staff.
May I?
Yeah.
And on that note, I always walk, and Desiree almost always walks. So here's a pledge sheet. So if you would like to leave a donation, you can put your name and address here.
I'm actually prepared. I've got a couple, yeah.
So just, you know, put your money or check on the table or house, and we'll call you, and we'll pick it up.
Thank you much. Appreciate it.
All righty. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. All right. At this time, I would like to recognize Raton Fire Department Chief Anthony Burke. We got a letter. These are the kind of letters that mayors like to receive. It says, Dear Mayor Sagata, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize and commend Chief Anthony Burke for the outstanding support he provided to the FBI Santa Fe Resident Agency. On June 22nd, 2023, Chief Burke, along with his firefighter paramedics, assisted the FBI during the execution of high visibility arrests and search warrants in Springer, New Mexico. Their support resulted in the agents safely taking the subject into custody, as well as safely being able to execute a search warrant on the subject's home. Our special agents assigned to work in the Santa Fe Resident Agency are extremely appreciative of the assistance the Raton Fire Department provided, and they have advised me regarding their untiring efforts and high level of professionalism. I would like to personally thank Chief Burke and the Raton Fire Department for their efforts in not only protecting the safety and security of both Raton and Springer, but also for protecting the interests of our nation. Sincerely, Rahal Buchanda, Special Agent in Charge. Chief, congratulations. You and your crew, outstanding guys. You do outstanding work, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Any words?
I'm on right now. I said be here, so I'm here. I appreciate it very much. And it'll be forwarded on to them.
Please do. Please do. And thank them for all of us. All righty. Thanks, Chief. All righty. Item five, committee reports from Commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
The North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board of Directors Meeting. I attended that on August 24th in Santa Fe. The highlights were approvals of the new board members, a AAA plan amendment, several budget adjustments, and approval to move forward on purchasing a building for new premises. We also had presentations that lasted very long on EV charging and programs on the workforce integrated network, which is a program that creates pathways for underemployed and unemployed people into higher paying jobs in healthcare and building trades. The next meeting will be October 26th in Santa Fe. I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference and the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Business Meeting for the Board of Directors, August 29th through September 1st in Farmington. I had a few bring homes, this will be a little bit long. I attended the governing body forum, sessions on conflict and civility, parliamentary procedure, the economic growth story of Farmington, and communicating through crisis panel discussion, along with general sessions and socials. I also attended the annual business meeting and ended up as the voting delegate, as Mayor Protem Schuster had to leave early for work. One takeaway was for the city to develop core values and a mission statement, which I believe we realize we have some of that going, and communicate that on a daily basis, and use those tools in our decision making. Another takeaway was Farmington's model for the outdoor recreation industry feasibility study with a gap analysis, and also that Farmington is always making decisions based on if they're delivering on their brand promise, and they're very focused on those things. They are doing some other cool projects in Farmington in terms of things that, well, some of it's Outdo Rec and some of it's other stuff, but they're working on an all abilities park, which sounds pretty intriguing. They have a program where artists create sculptures, and they put them downtown, and they rotate them, and people can purchase them. Kind of cool that spruce up their downtown. They have some really wonderful music piped into their downtown that even though they have a lot of closed shops, it makes it look really lively. And I got some more information on that. They're looking at a lot of property for non-motorized recreation. They're doing an alternatives to public safety program with different levels of response units and a sobering center. They're a lot bigger than we are, but these are some ideas. Some Rails to Trails project, and we were reminded to take advantage of the Free State OREC toolkit. That's all things outdoor recreation and economics. It was interesting to see that many of the things Farmington talked about beyond those things were very similar to what we're already doing in Raton. We're just doing it on a smaller scale. They did mention that they are building, or that they built six pickleball courts over old tennis courts, and their cost was $640,000 for those six courts. We were encouraged to join Endeavor, which is the New Mexico Outdoor Business Alliance, where cities can join for free, so getting a spot on that. Let's see. We were also invited to have an active shooter training anytime we want them to come to Raton, and I know we've done that in the past. I'd like to see that happen again soon. The New Mexico Self Insurers Fund mentioned that they will do free HR policy and police policy reviews, I think is what they're saying, to make sure that everything's up to date with best practices. And they encourage us to take use of free mediation and counseling services needed with any level of person in the city. Parliamentary procedure was a really interesting conversation, had some takeaways in fine tuning our meetings, such as if there's no motion or no second, the motion dies, and then a motion does not, to not take action is out of order, which was interesting. There were a lot of other small details, and at that point, I was glad the mayor is running the meetings. There was a lot. Next year, the annual conference will be in Clovis. And then I just recently attended the Ports to Plains Alliance Annual Conference and Board Meeting from September 13th through the 15th in Eagle Pass, Texas. We started out with our board meeting, where we agreed to continue services with Hampton Scarborough LLP for federal and state lobbying efforts. There's been a lot of progress now that they have the lobbyists in DC, because for a while, it was just people flying in every March. So now that they have someone there keeping an eye on everything, it's helping the different legislation move a little bit year round. And then they have someone stationed in Texas, since that's the state with the biggest pull and the most need right now. We approved budgets, and then Lauren Gardunio, the president of Ports to Plains, will be here October 13th for our Economic Development Conference. Said that in July, he spoke with the, he was asked to speak to the New Mexico Legislative Finance Committee, and he gave them updates on the legislation on the federal level and suggestions on how New Mexico can fund their transportation program, including the future I-27 from Clayton to Raton. We had a lot of updates during the conference and the board meeting on the Texas progress on I-27. I've never learned so much about asphalt bridges and pavement, and I will admit, there are a few moments that I was a little bored, which is not usual for me. We also had updates on the Theater Roosevelt Expressway in the North and South Dakota, in North and South Dakota, and the Heartland Expressway in Nebraska, because they're all on that corridor. We're kind of the spur that comes off from Amarillo, but it goes all the way north, south, or south to north, north to south, from ports at Laredo and other ports along that Texas border with Mexico, all the way up to Canada. And right now, they're in conversations with people in, I don't want to say it wrong, I don't know if it was Alberta, but somewhere in Canada that's on the corridor where they're trying to get the Canadians back on the table, and that's, they're hoping that they'll come to our next, the next conference will be in Dickinson, North Dakota, next year. We were in Eagle Pass, Texas, now we're going to Dickinson, North Dakota. But they're hoping to get the Canadians down. Some of the interesting stuff from that conference was the sheer amount of AI and data that's being used to run our roadways, and Austin has some kind of cutting edge stuff going on where they're creating these data bubbles that communicate with vehicles, and the futuristic stuff of traffic and roads is super interesting. Like they are thinking, you know, there's an accident 50 miles away, and they can use AI almost instantly to reroute traffic and make everything a lot better. As far as Raton is concerned, the I-27 numbering bill that designates the road between Clayton and Raton into Texas down to the Laredo as I-27 should pass this calendar year. The corridor was already passed, but they hadn't numbered it. So they're trying to get all the interstate numbering. It includes a lot of spur interstates loops and whatnot in Texas. So that numbering bill is moving along, and they think it's gonna pass soon. They don't know for sure, but they're somewhat positive on the congressionally directed spending request. They requested, probably heard in other meetings, $2 million. Clayton requested it on behalf of this area, on behalf of New Mexico for planning for I-27. That 1.6 federal and 400 was matched by New Mexico DOT. That's still in the works, but we hope that it might pass. And then our next board meeting will actually be in Washington DC in the fly-in in late February or early March. Thank you for your patience. That's all I have.
Not a problem. Thank you. Commissioner Jacomo.
I hope you clap for the library board report.
RPS board meeting was held on September 25th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Robin Osborn, RPS manager, office manager and bookkeeper, presented to and approved by the board financial and statistical information. She reviewed with the board budget for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024, also approved by the LGD, which is Local Government Division. Also reviewed was operating procedures for servicing Raton Public Service loads from New Mexico in the area. General Manager Dave Fontino gave this report on work assignments. The form included information collected from him from Unit 4 and the solar farm. Also moving over to the library. The Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Advisory Board met on September 19th at 5:30 PM. Library Director Danny Marcus reported to the board that the state report and all the supporting documents were filed on August 8th, 2023, and they were waiting for word that they have been approved. Items requested under GO, or 2020, 2020 GO program have been received and are in work and being worked on now. Statistical information for the month of July. Donations collected was zero. Fines collected was $197.47. Copies made, $580.25. Memorials received was $35. Story hours held was four, attended by 122 persons. Programs held were 12, attended by 29 persons. Statistical report for month of August 2023. Donations received were zero. Fines collected, $156.85. Copies made was $437.85. Memorials received was zero. Story hours held were two, attended by eight persons. Programs held were 12, attended by 49 persons. That's all I got, man.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez.
I attended the Raton. I attended the Raton Water Board meeting on September 15th. We discussed and approved a resolution to grant funding for the renovation of the $3 million freshwater tank. The city will spend approximately $250,000 for our share of repairing the tank. The tank currently is having some rust problems in it and some of the gear inside, and so they're gonna redo the whole thing. Lake Maloya is only two feet below spilling, which is really good for this part of the year. Raton has been blending Cimarron and Maloya water on a 70/30 basis. Repairs on the Cimarron system are completed, and we discussed and approved the charge-off list and amount of $16,000. There was no financial board meeting. That's all I have.
All righty. Mayor Protem.
Well, and if you'll notice, Commissioner Chavez did not say anything else, because I wasn't there. But on that day, I was doing a very humbling activity, and I think it's worthy of taking note. It's not quite a report, but I was in Stockholm, and that particular day, the 19th, I was visiting Stedhuston, Husit, I'm not sure I say it right at all, which is Stockholm City Hall, and that's where they give away the Nobel Prizes. And it's, it gives you goosebumps to see the names on the wall of who received those and to know that Paul Modrich is up on that wall, and he graduated from Raton, what year?
64.
1964. And received the award, I believe it was 2015. Yeah. And we should be so proud of that, that we have a statue or some other, so I'm gonna suggest that we think of some way to actually visibly show our gratitude and how humble we are to know that we have a gentleman of that statue who's been here. It's quite, it was quite an experience. Can you tell? I'm getting goosebumps just thinking about it now. Okay. Backing up into other things. Then on September 4th, I got a call from Garrett Spears, and I went, who? And then he said he's the governor of Michelle Bluman Grisham's scheduler, and he asked if I could bring Frankie Mahanna down to see the governor. And so we arranged for a meeting with her on September 8th. It was, it was really a fun and wonderful meeting. She bent over backwards to make a grand procedure for Frankie. There were, you know, pictures and pictures and pictures taken, and pictures shaking hands here, and pictures shaking hands there. And she told him his photographs. He gave, he presented two photographs to her, and her, his photographs are gonna be hanging in the lobby of the Capitol Building. And she hopes that we can work it out, that he can at least get his, one of his bear photographs as a postcard that will be a state postcard. So it was a grand, really great experience. We took a, she, at one point, she only had so much time, obviously, and Garrett standing there going, you know. But she did say, you wanna have a cup of coffee? I looked her, I said, you don't have enough time. And, but we did have a quick chat about quite a few things, including I-27 and police work in the state, and how she's hoping to crack down on some crime issues. And it was a good visit, very good visit. And then, of course, the Labor Day weekend was Gate City Music Festival, and I just want to say to those, anyone who had anything to do with putting that together, that was a wonderful experience. Good job, as usual. On the 30th and 31st, I was at the Municipal League, as well as the mayor and Lori. I'm just gonna give you some quick highlights of things that Lori didn't touch on, or that I didn't catch that you touched on, and that's, I went to, also, one of the workshops I went to was on green hydrogen, which was presented by primarily the John Ortega, who's the mayor of Questa, and Kate Carson Electric Cooperative, as well as the Chevron Mining Corporation. Their, they, their goal is to make Questa 100% green within the next few years. I think he said five years. They have a lot of, the Chevron Mining Corporation has a lot of water, and they're gonna be converting it to hydrogen. So that was, that was incredibly interesting and over my head as an engineer. Not, I'm not an engineer. And then there was, let's talk civility in our world. I think we learned a few good things there. And I also went to the housing workshop, and in that, there is some money out there to help build houses, help increase housing in small communities like ours. And we would, the thing that stands out the most, I have pictures of slide, the slide presentation, but the thing that stood out the most was that if the county has already started a plan, and I don't know if ours has, it really behooves us to partner with them and join in on that, and we could get some good funding to get some housing, especially for like teachers and hospital personnel, et cetera, which is definitely needed in this community. We have, we've gotten to be where we have a bit of a shortage in housing. And ours is not low-income housing. Ours, our shortage is that mid-level housing that just the average working person can afford and afford to get into where you don't need an astronomical level of down payment. And I think we can get that worked out by working with the county. I was able to stay long enough to eat the lunch, but I didn't see our mayor honored as a past president, but I know you were there to do that. And of course, part of being there, you get to go through and get all kinds of cha-chis, really. And, you know, we have, you know, I talked about, we should get you a watch, and you said, no, I don't want anything, but I'm gonna present you with this gold pen from Florence and Lori. And a little notebook. A great little, look at this thing. It does a great little, it's a light and a pen. You can, you can have fun with that. Yeah, because, you know, you're gonna miss going to these things. This is a, you can pull the little tab. It's a little guitar that flashes from Clovis. Next to this, Clovis. Here's, here's another pen. A chapstick. And then, of course, they give candy out everywhere.
Oh, now we're talking.
Tootsie Roll. You know, and this nice little lunch bag. You'll need this. Another carabiner, chapstick. And then you may want to pass this on to our new, you know, little stress ball, and you know, you may want to leave this for.
Yeah, I don't need that anymore, but. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Well done.
One final quick thing on the 26th. I was able to attend the Pride Parade, which I thought it turned out very nicely. It was a, it brought in about 350 people, so it was a good, I think it was good, very good thing. A little, you could tell it was the inaugural one. You guys were a little nervous about doing everything, but you pulled it off very well and did a good job. That's it. That's it.
Okay, as for myself, I'm not gonna bore you with details of the meetings that we all attended, but I did attend the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District meeting with Commissioner Chatterley. Also attended the annual conference of the New, New Mexico Municipal League and the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund Board meeting. That was held in Farmington as well. Attended the RPS meeting last night with Commissioner Jacamo. One thing that, uh, Commissioner, you might have mentioned, but the photovoltaic field is up and running, and I think our peak output on that, uh, they said last night, was it six point eight megawatt, Don? I think it was six point eight megawatt for one day, so.
Kilowatt hour.
Kilowatt, yes, kilowatt, not megawatt. Megawatt, we'd light the whole city, wouldn't we? Yeah. But that would be cool, that would be good. Kilowatt, yes, it was kilowatt, my bad, my bad. We also met with the, uh, Football Association yesterday, Commissioner Chatterley and Mayor, uh, the mayor and the city manager and, and that, and had a very good conversation, I thought, I thought we made some progress, and we're looking forward to working there. Uh, the next two days, I will be attending the New Mexico Economic Development District Strategic Planning Meetings. They will be in Santa Fe the next two days. I will be attending that, and I also have a Municipal League Board meeting next Friday, so that will be in Santa Fe, so I'll be attending that. And one of the things that we, we, one of the, uh, presentations we went to at the league was the civility one and dealing with that. And one of the things the guy had us do at the beginning, which I thought was pretty cool, was, I call it thirty seconds of chaos, 'cause that's what it was, basically. But for the first thirty seconds of your meeting, 'cause I'm looking out here, and I say, oh, you guys sound like this. Yeah, now, now real enthusiastic. So for the first thirty seconds of a meeting, you're supposed to get up as enthusiastically as you can, walk up to everybody and say, hello, how you doing? So I'm gonna give you fifteen seconds, let's everybody get up, and be enthusiastic and say, hello, welcome to the meeting, and how the heck are you doing? All right? All right, you got fifteen seconds.
Go.
How the heck you doing? All right. After the meeting, I'm hugging your neck. Okay. We're gonna get the thirty-second thing. Obviously, some people don't know how to tell time. All right, don't you feel better now? All right.
You know, about a year ago, I gave you a timer.
That was good.
You're welcome. Now you can all put your frowns on, 'cause we're gonna get into the business part, okay? All right. Item six, items from citizens present, anyone wishing to address the commission could do so at this time. Unless it's something on the agenda, would you please wait until that item comes up? Man?
Well, so first with my Better City hat on, I wanted to make sure that everybody knows about the Economic Development Summit. That's on October thirteenth, and then, of course, it's gonna be the Spaghetti and Western Film Festival that weekend. So if you are SVP, um, for the summit, you can get free passes to the festival as well, so I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. Um, and then with my citizen hat on, uh, we are planning an, uh, an election forum. We just kind of solidified it today, we're gonna be sending stuff out about it, but that's gonna be on October seventeenth at the Convention Center from six and to eight o'clock. And then with my Elberton Media Works hat on, I want to really, um, thank, um, City Manager Barry for all that he has done for this community, uh, for Elberton Media Works, this project. I know it's the whole, uh, City Commission, but I know that you were a big champion of this project, and we would not have the funding that we have and the proceeds, so I just really wanna thank you.
Thank you.
And some brownies. I didn't make them fresh, I'm sorry.
A rose and a squeezy thing, that's.
We could not be here without you, so thank you for all your service.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Good evening, Jeff Peterson, I'm here actually on behalf of the World Journal on the election theme, and this is just an announcement for candidates, uh, candidates here in the room, candidates listening on KRTN. So the World Journal is publishing free of charge candidate profiles in an upcoming newspapers. So you have until this Friday, the twenty-ninth, to submit your details. And, uh, you should have an email in your inbox from me that has the details and a little attachment about how many words and a photo. And you can always call the World Journal directly if you need info, if you don't, if you can't find that email, or reach out to me if you have my contact info. So deadline Friday, this is the free posting with your profile where you can present your platform to the community.
Alrighty, thank you.
I'm Sandra Young, representing Moss Adventures and the Raton Adventure Center, and I would also like to very specifically say thank you to City Manager Scott Barry for being the linchpin reason that we came to this town, for taking that first call, which, uh, for Desiree for taking the message and acting properly on it, which she always does. But he is also the reason that we are here, and seven days a week, he's been available to us in our, our two platforms and making the Coors Building happen. So I thank you so much for getting us to Raton, and we really feel like we've found home.
Thank you, Sandra, thank you.
Anyone else? Since we're all thanking Scott at this time, you know, we're gonna thank him, but we're gonna do something special for him at one of our meetings in October, so please all come out for that, would you? Okay, we'll let you know the details. Trust me, you'll wanna be there. All right.
Extra chairs in the hall.
That's right.
Just when the meetings are getting fun.
I'm trying to figure out how to get the dunk tank in here, but we'll, we'll figure it out. All right, let's move on to the business items. Item seven, seven A, deliberate and act on approval of September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. There are no additions or corrections to the minutes, they will stand approved as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I have one correction.
Okay.
Item, or one addition, sorry, item B on the presentation from the public schools. I believe, um, where it has the four sixty-five dollar amount, I believe that's supposed to be just average of, 'cause I don't think that's across the board, there's a mathematical.
Oh, yes, it is, thank you.
So just adding the word average of. And with that amendment, I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve amendments, the minutes with the amendment. Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on corrections to resolution numbering from the September twelfth Commission meeting. Fifty-five and fifty-six were, were used and should have been fifty-eight, fifty-nine. Desiree, you wanna explain that one?
I didn't look at the special meeting that I missed, so I looked at my other numbers, and then I realized once I was preparing the agenda, so this correction is mine.
Alright.
Motion to approve the correction?
Well, motion and a second to approve the correction, any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate and act on Center for Community Innovation Skill Sharp, Skill Sharp subcontractor agreement. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Commission, we do have representatives of the Center for Community Innovation, uh, with us tonight. They would like to make a presentation, uh, to the City Commission and an update as far as the Skill Sharp program. Uh, as you recall, the City Commission has funded this program through the Center in past years, uh, and I think they would like to talk about, uh, uh, an expansion of the offerings for the program. So Patricia, if I could, uh, turn the floor over to you and, uh, let you inform the Commission as to where we're at on the Skill Sharp program, and please introduce your associate.
So I'm Patricia Duran, I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Community Innovation. This is our new Skill Sharp admin who has taken over, um, services, and so she's gonna actually pass out, um, a list of catalogs that I will be talking about here in a second.
And her name?
Bianca. I was like.
Thank you.
I'm growing, I remember mine, and it's just gone, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, I did put that in there. Oh, you did? Okay, I just, I was unsure.
Yes.
Yeah, they're in here. Alright, so, um, Skill Sharp, um, just so that you all know, is that, um, we've been doing this for two years. We have about seven thousand online courses, and basically what it is, is it's a way for us to upskill our workforce development online, and it's available to employers and employers in Raton. And so, one of the really neat things is, um, you guys have been funding it for two years, and so I really wanna thank you guys for, you know, taking a chance on this. For the past two years, I just wanna give you a little bit of history, is that it's been heavily focused on career pathways with Raton High School students, and we've utilized it for the Help New Mexico Summer and Winter Internship Programs for youth, which is ages between sixteen and twenty-six, I believe, and also for the, um, Workforce Initiative Opportunity App Programs with Help New Mexico. So these online courses have whatever topic you could think of, they are in there. And so, if somebody is an employer and they want to upskill their, um, their employees in a specific trade or a specific skill, say maybe accounting, they can do that. And also, this has been, uh, because of the commission and because of the city's partnership, we've been able to provide this free to anyone within the eight-seven-seven-four-zero zip code. In the past, so the past two years, we've actually had it as a contracted part-time position, and I will talk about, you know, what our new approaches are. So in your packet, you'll see some important stats. So for this past year, we've had two hundred and eighty-two users utilizing Skill Sharp, and the majority of those chunks of that chunk in the pie chart is, um, forty-six percent are from the high school, and then the community at large who's using it, you know, these are just random individuals who came in. We had about thirty-one percent of that number, and then the next thing is we had, we signed up employers and employees, and about thirteen percent of them were utilizing it. And then, also, we utilize it as well at the Center. We've had approximately twenty-two, um, employees of the last year and a half, I believe, and we've all utilized it in some way, including our interns through the Help New Mexico, um, internship program. And then on that next page for the important stats of, um, Skill Sharp with those users, we noticed a really interesting trend, and you'll see that. You'll see who is utilizing it the most, and so I wanted to talk about our new, um, our new approach to using Skill Sharp for this new year. So based on the data that we've pulled from our systems, is that the, the community at large, and working directly with employers and employees, had the most return on investment, meaning that these people were more likely to complete a course, complete a class, complete a certification, or taking, you know, multiple courses. And so, with this whole new year of seeing all of these trends, I know that we focused mostly in the high school, but now we wanna focus more on the workforce at large, 'cause we were trying to focus more on the high school at, um, in the beginning, because they're gonna be the new workforce. We want to retain as many employable individuals as well, and also to clean brain drain. And so we kinda just saw a different trend, and just for the most part, we, we wanna focus on that in this next coming year. Another thing we wanna focus on this year is pushing skilled trade certifications. Skill Sharp just came out with, um, an entire catalog of skilled trade certifications, and what's really great, you know, if you wanna share a little bit about them, about kind of what they, I don't know.
So the trades are actually to help, um, one thing that I do like people know is that, um, I went for nursing for four years, and I got all the way to clinicals and realized that, hey, I don't wanna put a needle in anybody, I couldn't even stand it. So I quit, and like, that was four thousand, five thousand dollars later. With these classes, people don't just have to choose, like, right away, oh, this is the trade that I wanna be in. They can come in and, and, and work on some trades to figure out what fits them. And, um, one thing that I've seen in the community, because as soon as, um, as soon as I, I got registered for this and passed the training, I was like, let's see what the workforce needs. So I've been going business to business, um, seeing what, why, why is, why is there such a big turnover? And a lot of people are just in a job, they're just clocking in and out, and what I wanna do is I wanna help them, not just give them a tool, but somebody to call and say, hey, I haven't seen you on, like, is there, you know, is there anything I can help you with? Somebody to, have an accountability partner to help them to succeed, and to find it, like, like, these trades are so many. There are so many skills and trades that are offered, there's over like nine thousand. It says seven thousand plus, but I've, I've looked, it's, it's crazy amount, but, um, we wanna find jobs for people that they're happy in. They're not just gonna just, you know, keep changing jobs, but something that they can, and if, and if they are having jobs, at least to build resume skills, so that when they do get to the trade that they wanna get to, that they're, they're positioned, they're ready. You know what I mean? They have the background for it. And also, sorry, what were they? There are so many skills, um, she was mentioning earlier, um, that the, um, the training for the active shooter, there's like five trainings in there, like, there's so many skills in there, it's, it's, it's crazy. But I just wanna put that knowledge in, in Raton's, you know what I mean, minds, so that we can grow. I just wanna see people grow, businesses grow, that's for sure.
Yes, and so with that, um, we've actually partnered with, um, I guess, Help New Mexico and New Mexico Workforce Solutions and Connections, and we've also partnered with, you know, our Raton Media Works, Ramo Family Farms, Crossroads. We're working on the hospitality industry now, local banks and government. And so our new approach is tend, kinda to create a pipeline of clients through all of these local partners, and Bianca's had great success, so we spent, normally we would have been here in July or August to ask for a renewal, but we spent the last two or three months kind of analyzing all of the data and also trying to create a new approach for y'all. And so with that, we're also applying for more grants to make this from a part-time position to a full-time position, because it needs to be more focused, like you said, she needs, we need someone to hold people's hands and show them, um, you know, their potential and to give them solutions and resources. And then, you know, so for our scope of work, for the most part, which you'll see in your packets, is that we're providing employers, employees, interns, and individuals with personalized pathways in, um, their professional development and in training. We're also starting classes and workshops and presentations on professional development, so if somebody needs to know, you know, what not to post on social media in order to get hired, or, you know, resume building, or they need, uh, to get ready for their interviews, they'll have Bianca to, um, walk through that process with them. And maybe they might need their high school equivalency, so she, we've also partnered with Luna Community College to provide free prep for the, um, the high school equivalency program that we have at the Center, and that's going very, very well. I wish I had the numbers on that, though you don't right now. But also work alongside, alongside our economic development partners. And so, for the most part, our new plan is to start really working more in the local, um, business community with, you know, having Bianca go door-to-door, more accessibility to her, so that it's not a part-time position, it's full-time, so if somebody needs anything around the clock, she is there to help them. And then, so last but not least, um, just kinda wanna talk about our pipeline, is that at, at the Center for Community Innovation, we have our high school equivalency testing and prep program, we'll have Skill Sharp and our professional development curriculum, and then anyone who goes through any of our programs, we will directly refer them to Workforce Solutions and Connections, Help New Mexico Organizations, Businesses, Volunteer, Volunteer Opportunities, also with public schools, and they will also, you know, be a revolving pipeline as well to start referring to us. And we've created a great partnership, and if you wanna talk about workforce real quick, we will be done.
So, yeah, so, um, I had a meeting with, um, the Workforce Connection today, and, um, it's something that I really wanted to.
that I really wanted to reach out to, like, the TANF, the people that are on TANF and disability, just finding them a different trade, finding somewhere that they fit in, but we were able to, to partner with them today, so their, their recipients, their clients are now going to be coming to me for Skill Sharp, because we have a, we have a computer lab, so if they, they can come in and, and do these skills here, and it'll be, basically, it's for their work, you know what I mean? They're actually learning a skill, and, or, we're also signing them up for the GED classes, because we've already had like 10 people that we've signed up for just the GED, just the GED itself. Yeah, that was good, that was amazing.
And so, since we've kind of revamped everything, we've had about 24 new users, especially we're getting those clients from Workforce Solutions into our computer lab, and so that's been great. So we've kind of set a goal, and at six months, is we plan to have 15 enrollees and 10 businesses investing in, using Skill Sharp. That is the minimal, because we're, Bianca's hit the ground running the last month and a half, so she, she already, she already has 20, 24 actually, as of today. So those are our new plans and our new goals. Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions? Yeah, I think it's a pretty good program. What kind of buy-in are you getting from the businesses, I mean, cooperation and stuff like that?
So, they really want to, so we, we, there should be like a second, the sec, the third page, so what, what are the, the guys?
The skills.
The one that I have now?
This one?
Yes, that one. So what we did communicate with the businesses that I have spoke to, they were just saying that a lot of, a lot of their, their employees don't have good communication, are, you know, they buckle under stress, they lack confidence, a lot of them, like, they have to be led, they don't work alone. So we, I worked with the Skill Sharp, one of the Skill Sharp associates, and we came up with that to help them prep for work, not like, it's not just like learning how to, but we're talking about communication, we're talking about how to be prepared, we even talked about how to deal with conflict, how to, how to deal with disgruntled customers, how to handle stress at work, how to separate work from, from home and home from work. And I'm hoping, they are, they have been getting on those things, and I'm hoping that when I go back, because I'll be going back, to see if it's actually helping. But sometimes, like, I was speaking to them, the, the, one of the gentlemen from Crossroads, like, they've jumped on it, they've been bringing their clients, and they're like, their confidence is getting better, they're seeing that they really do, they really do belong in the workforce, and they're looking for jobs, they're not just like waiting, they're looking for jobs, and I think that that's just amazing.
Very good. Any other questions, comments?
I like the direction that you guys are going with, because I think it's a good improvement from where it was, and I appreciate the time that you spent to kind of have this redirection. So I look forward to seeing the reports and statistics that come from this, and the real-life experiences.
Mayor Commission, you have a, an agreement in your packet for your consideration. As part of the agreement on Exhibit A, there are a couple of the important terms, the proposed start date of the contract, October 1st, it would run for a term of 12 months to terminate October 1st of 2024, and then the fee would be $2,000 per month, invoice the first of each month for the prior month.
All right, thank you, so we're looking at a $48,000 total agreement. Or 24, I'm sorry.
24, and then?
24.
The 24 for the monthly, and then 2,000 for promotion, and then 10,000 for the license? And that looks like it's up like $4,000 with the additional program?
Yes, so they've been giving us a discount for the last two years, and so, we think with our, so we came back, and they told us it would be full price this time. But our plan also is to go after grants, like I put in the new approach, to supplement that and to cut that cost down. So I, one thing I did have a conversation with Ms. Van Anne is that it's not due until November 1st, so if that cost is cut down, if I'm applying for grants right now, hopefully you're back in the next two weeks, so then if we decide not to go, you know, if we find supplemental income, we will let you know as well. Or if we find a different program as well that has, utilizes the same, we can definitely change that number.
It's like a total of 36,000? That's 4,000 from last week.
I'm missing.
It's on the last page of this one.
I looked on the last page.
Of this?
Of the one with the little, even the work.
I was looking on the other one.
Yeah.
The actual agreement.
Right.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, well, I will move to approve the Center for CCI Skill Sharp subcontractor agreement.
We have a motion in a second to adopt, to approve the agreement between the community, Center for Community Innovation Skill Sharp subcontractor agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Al.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item D, deliberate and act on lodger's tax advisory board recommendations. We've got the Clash at Colfax Disc Golf Tournament by Moises Ortiz, and a correction clarification to the lodger's tax request from forum for the Rainbow Alliance Pride Festival. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in your packet you have a memo that reflects a recommendation of the lodger's tax advisory board from their September 20th, 2023 meeting. There's one new recommendation, then you have the other issue for City Commission consideration. This is the, the recommendation from that meeting. The lodger's tax advisory board is recommending to the City Commission that $2,800 be allocated to the Clash at Colfax Disc Golf Tournament. This would go towards advertising, course maintenance, trophies, prizes, t-shirts, player packs, and extras, and it would be allocated to the annual events fund.
All righty, any questions, comments?
Just on the trophies and prizes, that we've never done money?
Right.
To make sure that that's understood, that it's not for cash? My understanding?
It's kind of like a belt, he said, like a wrestling belt type of thing, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We don't get cash for cash. And they're aware of the Explore Raton?
Yes, sir.
Raton logo on it.
Okay. I know these are good, good tournaments, so.
I'll move to approve the Clash at Colfax Disc Golf Tournament lodger's tax request.
A motion in a second to approve the Clash at Colfax Disc Golf Tournament, the recommended amount of $2,800. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, correction, clarification to lodger's tax request for the Rainbow Alliance Pride Festival. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, I believe this has to do with a, an appropriation of lodger's tax money that was approved by the Commission at a earlier meeting to the organization, Rainbow Alliance, for their festival. The festival has been held, the event is conducted, but I believe there is some clarification of where the funds can be allocated to. I, I believe that the original allocation was $6,750, however, there's some miscommunication on what exactly I, those items could be allocated to, and I think in your packet, you have some updated information, as well as the information that was previously considered by the City Commission. It comes down to a, a difference of allocation in individual items, as you have in front of you for your discussion and consideration.
All righty, I believe we do have some questions, and I'll start with Commissioner Chatterley.
So my biggest concern is, we've already, we already agreed to this, lodger's tax already approved it, and it's not just different amounts, they, there are different items in the descriptions at this point, so I feel uncomfortable approving that change, because that's, you know, we, we have a process that we go through, and this is not typical that we would come back and change it after the original agreement. Those are my concerns.
Any other questions? My concern would be the same thing. We were presented with one request, and now we're at being asked to change monies around. How is that going to be looked at on a audit standpoint, and where do we stand there? I mean, this, like Commissioner Chatterley says, there's different language, different amounts for these.
Different sections?
Things, sections. I understand the amount's still the same, but if I was a bookkeeper, these are things that would come to my attention.
That would want to set a precedent?
Right.
Yeah, that's not too difficult.
I mean, when you bring something to us for approval, it's, that's where it sits. We approve it as is, we don't come back and
Realign.
Realign it. That's my concern, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, just in response to that, it's, you know, unpredictable to me how an auditor might look at that, I mean, I, I see the point, and it's hard to predict, you know, if that's going to be an auditor issue, it's, it's, you know, not clear there, but certainly, yeah, probably a legitimate concern with, with a review of this by an independent auditor.
Like I said, the amount is not, the total amount is still 6, 750, but for, the monies to be switched into different line items, I'm just going to call it for, for my understanding, I don't think that's something that we, we could just arbitrarily do.
It would set a precedence, and then from then on, we could be in a lot of trouble.
Right.
So my question is then, what, how do we deal with this, for this issue? Michaeline, do you have insight here?
Mayor Commission, it was suggested that we put this on the agenda this evening. I was presented with a reimbursement request from this group, and so my process, when I approve something, I kind of put it side-by-side with the request that was approved, and so there were receipts that were being submitted for reimbursement, that, to me, it wasn't clear on the award that was made, which you have a copy of, that some of those expenses were allowed per which you had approved. It was explained to me by one of the members of the group, that I believe the original one that was submitted to you, there may have been an issue with one of the columns, maybe it wasn't expanded far enough, and so it wasn't reading the full description. So I did explain to them that, you know, that actual audit finding would occur if I was to pay something that was not previously approved. So I think that was one of the items to bring back to the Commission, potentially for clarification. The actual moving of the monies around in different line items, that was probably as a result of a communication that I had with them. We knew that they couldn't come back for any additional funds, but they did incur some expenses that potentially would be qualified as lodger's tax reimbursable expenses, but it is completely up to the Commission. The event has already occurred, and the expenses have been incurred kind of after the fact. But I think we do have a member of the organization here that might be able to speak a little bit more to maybe what happened with the, you know, the length of the cell that didn't have the complete description, because some of the invoices did include expense for entertainment, lodging for entertainers, so they did incur some of those expenses.
What is the feel from, from the Commission?
I think that we have to follow what we've been following, the standard that we've been doing. They're not asking for any more money at all, are they? Just realigning it?
But I guess, and Michaeline, in your reimbursement process, you don't just cut them a check for the 6, 750, or?
No, for years, the process for the City Raton Lodger's Tax, it's been on a reimbursement basis, so we do require that they submit documentation, so it's not a disbursement of the funds. We do require that documentation, and so that's really mainly for the audit, and that's why I wouldn't approve issuance of a check unless it's clear to me that it was previously approved.
And that speaks to what we're talking about here. We approved the initial agreement as presented, amounts 750, 500, 1,200, 3,500, and 800. To go against that, I think we're opening ourselves up to an audit finding.
I mean, just honestly, it's a lesson learned for the group, because, you know, lodger's tax works a certain way, if you request it for certain items, you know, it's approved that way, and then the, the expenses outside of that budget for that particular line item are your, are your own expenses. I mean, that's just how lodger's tax works. And, you know, looking at this, the wording is, I mean, I can see where it could have been cut off, but even some of the lines that are the same are, are different, so I would not be comfortable approving that and setting that precedent.
Nico, do you have something?
Isn't that up to the mayor to choose to invite people to speak?
Sorry.
He can say what he needs to say, but I mean, it's black and white. We approve this agreement right here. And part of your responsibility, when you're coming for funds, is to get with people, to make sure that you've got it properly filled out, because we can't go back and change things. This is like if the state would come to us, and we wanted to put three, three lanes on Sugar Reed Avenue instead of four, and do some, and build a bridge with the rest of the money, you know, you don't really get to do that. So. I, my opinion, our hands are tied by our initial approval.
By precedent.
And I'm not going to open, we've, we've worked too hard to have clean audits in this city for quite some time, and I'm not going to take that chance of us having an audit finding. That's, that's my opinion. I've got four other Commissioners here, so. The will of the Commission.
I would say stay with the original.
Want to place that in the form of a motion?
Make a motion that this process
Stay, stay as the original, as originally proposed?
Second.
A motion in a second to, to keep the proposal as originally presented. Is there any further discussion? Desiree, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on, item E, deliberate and act on event forums for Raton Main Street Safe Trip or Treat, October 31st, 2023, and Domestic Violence Awareness Walk Run, October 7th, 2023. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in the case of both of these proposed events, we do bring this to the Commission for your consideration. They're both events that we are familiar with from previous years, and we go through this process to ensure public safety, and so the event is reviewed by, by our police department, by our fire and EMS, and also and also by Public Works where traffic control is concerned. You will see from, looking specifically at the Raton Main Street Safe Trick or Treat event that is proposed for October 31st, at the hour of 3:30 PM to 6:00 PM, generally held during daylight hours. This is a, very much a family and, and child event and very popular with children. And it has been reviewed by staff. You have the recommendation of the staff for approval. Just to jump forward to the Alternatives to Violence Run and Walk that we talked about. The location would be Ripley Park, as Lee had stated, is proposed for October 7th at 8:30 AM. Again, something that staff has reviewed and brought a recommendation to the commission for approval.
Alright, thank you. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
Can we vote both of these at one time?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the Main Street Safe Trick or Treat and the Domestic Violence Walk and Run.
We have a motion to approve both events, the Safe Trick or Treat and the Domestic Violence Awareness Walk Run. Is there any further discussion?
I do have a comment and I don't think it actually applies to either one of these, but when we approve events where we're going to be blocking any areas off, I think we have to be ca, careful to no longer block off the charging, car charging stations. I believe, you know, that, those are now on a map that's nationally recognized and people look up on the map where they can charge their car. And if that's blocked off and they're inaccessible, then we are going against who we say we are. And I, so, like I said, I don't think either of these will block off any streets, but I just, I think we need to keep that in mind.
Well, it's something we can keep in mind, but there are other charging stations in town, too.
Uh, no, there are not. They're always accessible, those other two.
There's one out at Oasis.
It's, it's down for repairs.
And there's a couple that fill long, but it's something we can talk about later.
Right.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on Resolution 2023-60, corporate authorization to change the in-bank signature card. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could call on our treasurer, Michael Ann, had to do to come forward. We have two issues here. One is, we've been in the process of changing banks. We're transferring our banking services to in-bank here in Raton. And then, the second issue would be the, the change in city manager. So, Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, you'll recall that we brought this to you probably a couple of months ago. Due to the retirement of City Manager Barry, we're going to need to update those bank signature cards again. As he stated, we are still in the process of moving our accounts. We did receive this past week, most of our checks, stock, deposits, slips, bank bags, things of that nature. So, probably the first of the month, I'll start working on transferring the funds over and setting up our accounting system for the new in-bank products that we received. As a result, we do need to add City Manager Richard Mestes to the in-bank signature cards. So, I've given you a summary of the accounts that we currently have open with in-bank. And then, also due to some recent staff changes in my office, I did update items number two and, and three to take off staff that are no longer employed in our office.
Alrighty. Any questions, comments?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2023-60, corporate authorization to change in-bank signature cards.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2023-60. Any further discussion? Desiree, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Deliberate and act on Resolution 2023-61, disposal of surplus property electronic waste. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, we are bringing this item to you in regard to computer equipment generally that appears on our fixed asset list. And it is obsolete equipment that we've had stored in various places. We are going to make an effort to clean up generally stored materials. And we'll start with the electronic waste. So, this action would require your consideration of the resolution approving the disposal of surplus property, the electronic waste. You have a lengthy list of that material that's listed and I believe the value is probably the original value. Is that correct, Michael Ann?
Yes.
I would note that Jaden Welch, the city engineer, has really put some effort into putting this list together, working with the rest of the office staff, bringing that to you. And you can see that it's pretty extensive. We have quite a bit of junk out there, Mayor.
Yes, we do. Don't go upstairs. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023-61, disposal of surplus property electronic waste.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds to adopt Resolution 2023-61. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate and act on Resolution 2023-62, August financial reports. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, because we love papers so much, I'm going to do a revised general fund summary. I noticed there was a figure on there, it's just a few cents off, but I would be sure that it'd be correct. So, in your packets, we do have our financial report for the month of August. You'll see on the general fund summary that we just passed out. The general fund ending cash balance as of August 31st is five million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five thirty, forty-two. Less our 1/12 reserve, which this is calculated based on our budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year. Your available cash would be five million, one ninety-six, nine sixty-nine, seventy-five. I've also given you the ending cash balances for the remainder of our funds. You'll see that the general fund grocery seats recap, we did receive that distribution last week. That distribution does reflect the July business activity and we're currently, year-to-date, three percent above our budget projection. I did also make some notes on there. We did have some multiple reconciling issues this month. One of them was related to a vendor payment that was run in August, but it was inadvertently, the post date was posted for September, so it got posted in the wrong period. So, I'll need to correct some of that on the general ledger. Also, we had another issue with Airport Capital Projects Fund on the Hangar Project. We had a check that, that project is the Fund 300 and the check actually got ran on a general fund check. So, I'm going to need to do some adjustments on another check to reimburse the general fund to correct all of those entries as well. And these were for the remaining electrical expenses for the airport hangar. This was a hundred percent city funded and that project has been complete. You'll see later on this evening on the budget adjustment that I've provided, we'll also be doing a budget adjustment to properly record those expenses in the correct fund. I've also provided you with our comparisons for lodger's tax. We're still collecting lodger's tax for the month of September, so you'll see as of August, we're down just slightly, six percent compared to the previous year, but still actually doing quite well with the lodger's tax. This would reflect June and July's returns and then what we're collecting for now is August. So, next month for the first quarter probably would give us a better representation of the type of summer that we had. We also have our gas tax comparison. We are still down compared to the previous fiscal year, but our check for the month of September was twenty-three thousand, three seventy-three, which is better than the last two months. And then, also we have the cannabis excise tax comparison. We're up slightly compared to the previous fiscal year, first quarter. Previous year, we had about seven thousand, ninety-five collected and we've collected eleven thousand, nine seventy-eight, oh-four in the first quarter of this fiscal year. Also, if you look at the unaudited financial statement, that's our color-coded Excel spreadsheet in your packet, the twenty-seven thousand, seven oh-six, seventy off to the right-hand side, that's the exact amount that we're out of balance in the general fund and the airport improvement, capital improvement fund. So, we will get those corrections posted to the general ledger. Also, in the Airport Capital Improvement Plan, that fund was showing as a negative balance at the end of the fiscal year, but not fiscal year, August 31st. We did receive both reimbursements from State Aviation and the FAA just within the last two weeks. So, those funds have been received. And then, we have one other reconciling item, I think I may have mentioned, and it was, yeah, the check that was run, let's see, it was for records hardware that posted in the month of September instead of August. So, that's really all I have for you this evening. Are there any questions regarding the financial report?
Any questions for Michael Ann? Well, your fine job. Gas tax is kind of scary, but.
Yeah, I would just comment on that, Mayor. I think we're seeing more, you know, travel centers pop up in places around Raton. However, we have been working with a developer that is actively working on a development in Raton. I think that we'll see this correct itself back to, you know, what we would expect. And I think this project will move along fairly quickly. So, we'll be, we'll be talking about that in public here in the near future, but I think this is a committed party who is building in Raton.
Yep. Alrighty, I'll entertain a motion. A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2023-62, the August financial reports. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate on Resolution 2023-63, budget adjustment number two. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we do bring to you this evening budget adjustment number two. Our first budget adjustment was approved by DFA. As we progress through the new fiscal year, we typically do one a month so that we can stay on top of any adjustments that need to be made. You'll see under the transfers, we did show the twenty-seven thousand, seven oh-seven as an adjustment to correct the airport capital projects. Those funds will come out of the general fund. And then, also, let's see here, on the transfer out for the buildings, that's related to the senior center project. We are in the process of wrapping that up, but we do have some funds available, probably slightly over thirty thousand dollars. So, we are working with the architect on that to see how those funds can be, best be spent to expend the full amount for any other necessary kitchen upgrades. So, we will definitely try to spend those funds, but I am requesting a temporary transfer. I do have an outstanding grant reimbursement that I do not believe I'll receive as of the end of this month, which is also the end of our first quarter. So, out of caution, I would like to transfer those funds for the first quarter and then, we would transfer them back once the funds are received from aging and long-term. Other than that, the, the other funds are just line item adjustments. Our construction expense and the street improvement fund, as we talked about the gas tax. You know, we do utilize the gas tax funds heavily to provide the match for a lot of our projects. We do have the OnCall Street maintenance contract and so, they have been doing some work around town. Some of that is participation with homeowners, if it's kind of curb, curb repairs of that nature. So, you'll see that we do have some reimbursements that we receive for the property owners, fifty-fifty portion on that. And then, just adjusting the construction expense for some additional projects that we'll be doing for the OnCall Street contract. Other than that, the sanitation fund is also just a minor adjustment.
Any questions?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023-63.
Second. A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-63, fiscal year 24, budget adjustment number two. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on Resolution 2023-64, the InCode fiscal year 23, final end-of-year close adjustments. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, our InCode accounting system has a three-month carryover period, so, we're able to operate July, August, September. I am in the process of posting audit adjusting entries and working with our auditors to prepare all of our financials for the upcoming audit. Part of that process does require me to physically close out our InCode accounting system, upload the new budget and kind of get all of that situated for the new fiscal year. So, I'll be completing that process later this week. In order to do that, before I actually perform the physical close, we did have some bank fees. As you'll recall, New Mexico Bank and Trust throughout the fiscal year did assess bank fees to our accounts. As we reported earlier, we are in the process of switching banks to in-bank and so, these bank fees won't be an issue moving forward. But I did have three funds that I identified during my fiscal year end close that didn't previously have line items set up for the bank fees. So, I just kind of want to have all that set up in the system before I close the fiscal year. And that would be included in our financials for the audit. I did want to comment, New Mexico Bank and Trust, you know, did agree to increase our interest rate throughout the course of the year to kind of offset the bank fees. And so, we do appreciate them doing that, but it'll definitely be nice not to have to do the accounting for the bank service charge.
Absolutely.
And all of, because we have a lot of accounts.
Yes, we do. Any questions, comments?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2023-64.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-64. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on City of Raton Backup Generation Assessment Engineering Services Proposal. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, we have an interesting situation in the administration building here in which the west side of the building has an emergency backup generator when we lose power. That half of the building is powered up. And that's because we have the 911 system and the police department on that side of the building. However, this side of the building and the RPS building is not backed up. And when we lose power, we're just dark. The server here has a short battery. server here has a short battery life, but the, we're worried about bringing the server back up when we lose power. Something could happen to our data there. So, we have, in your packet, we have a proposal from a firm, Bridgers and Paxton, an experienced electrical engineering firm for assessment of adding backup generation. Now, we have our city engineer, Jaden Welch, present, and Jaden, I see he's got all dressed up for the meeting, and so let's put that to work. And so, if you'd come forward and give us the full information on this proposal and the project.
So, back in 2015, the police department upgraded their generator. The original generator was built in and installed in 2003, and so it had 12 years of service life. And so, we have, actually have that generator. It has very low use on it, and we're approaching Bridger and Paxton, asking that they perform this. This is just for the first phase of this project, where they will do kind of a feasibility assessment as to whether we can get the whole rest of this building, and can we get RPS on, all powered through this generator that we have. And after this, there will be another phase, if, you know, assuming things go well, and that phase will involve them putting together a bid package so that we can go out for bid to actually have the services performed.
Mayor, Commissioner, the proposed fee of Bridgers and Paxton to do the assessment phase is $12,000 plus an MGRT, which is estimated $915. That's what you would be agreeing to. It's not a design phase, but the assessment of the project.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. Is there a ballpark figure on what a new generator would cost, just out of curiosity?
That's...
I mean, obviously, this is cost-effective, and I'm assuming the new one would be just...
It depends on the size. It could be up to $50,000.
I was curious about the one that, the size that we would need.
That's pretty much right on point. The, when they replaced, they just did a drop-in replacement of the police department, and it was just under 60 grand for the new generator and installation drop-in replacement. This will have some other, we're setting up a new, we're not just dropping in a replacement, we're setting up a new one, but we already have the generator. So, of that 60 grand, I'm not exactly sure what the tran, or the generator proportion is of it, but I would say it would be a significant proportion of that near 60 grand.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to be clear, the additional phases would be, you know, a design phase and then a construction phase. So, there is more expense to be involved in the project, but we don't know if it's, if it's even feasible at this point. So, you do have the, the generator has been stored for a number of years. You know, we talked about the potential uses of that, maybe convention center, which we use as an evacuation center. We looked at the water treatment plant, however, we have, you know, the water treatment plant built in 1948 has some very unusual voltage up there. I think we would find that that's not feasible. And, you know, the concern with the admin building is the server and the data.
I think it's wise that we do something to protect our technicals.
I would say so.
I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah, that is... I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the Rattown Backup Generation Assessment Engineering Services Proposal.
Second.
Mayor, if I might, you know, we have not proceeded along with this, but I have talked to some of you about a cost-sharing arrangement with utilities as well. I don't know if you want to reflect that here, or you want me to pursue that following your action, but I think it's reasonable that, you know, we typically would approach utilities about participating in the cost.
And our typical, if I, if you remember, you tell me is, we do 50, they do 25 apiece?
That'd be a logical, a logical appropriation, in my view.
I would amend my motion to include the pursuance of that plan.
And would you like to make this approval contingent upon, or just to have us go forward and ask?
He's getting technical in his last meeting, isn't he?
Contingent upon. Contingent upon cost-sharing plan with the utilities.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. And I am assuming, Mr. Chavez, that you're amenable to her amendment?
Yes.
So, we have a motion to accept the proposal with the contingency that the other entities share in the cost. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item L, deliberate and act on bid award for Aquatic Center one-time repairs and maintenance. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, you recall that we opened the Aquatic Center for the first time in 2011, so we're about 12 years into the operation, 12 and a half, I believe, and we're seeing some things show up on the Aquatic Center. I think you'll probably generally be talking about some kind of improvement on the Aquatic Center going forward as we go. Following this, we have a list of things that we'd like to address on the Aquatic Center, but this item is specific to some plumbing problems that we have in the building. This showed up a couple of years ago, where we have leaks inside the wall, in the dressing rooms, in the shower rooms. We have three of those rooms in the facility, a men's facility, a women's facility, and a family shower and dressing room. And we've had similar leaks inside the wall on all three of those rooms. We have completed two phases of demoing the wall, fixing the plumbing leak, and then restoring the wall with an access panel where we can get access to in the future. I would point to, it's, it's really a construction, it's poor construction that's showing up now. This really shouldn't happen. What we'll talk about later is wear and tear on pumps and motors, and that would be expected to happen after 12 years of continuous service, but this is just poor construction. However, here, here we have it 12 years later. So, we've had several phases of this project before. Under this request for bids, we asked contractors to provide a price for going in and repairing the remaining five showers. We also would replace some toilet stalls and some miscellaneous equipment in those rooms. The, we got one bid, that is from Mozark LLC. Their bid is in the amount of $85,350, and that excludes the Mexico grocery state's tax. How we propose to pay for this would be out of the two quarter cent increments that are allocated for debt service on the facility and capital improvements. So, we have the money in that fund for this. We struggled with this recommendation to the commission because this price is high. It's significantly high. And the, the team talked about this over, over the course of a couple of days. I think in the end, you have a recommendation to award this contract to Mozark LLC. There's some caveats that, you know, you're, you're paying a lot for this project, but I think the feeling is, you know, let's, let's get this done. These are actively leaking sites, but just to throw that out there, it's, it's a high price.
All right. Yeah, it is, I've had discussions with Mr. Berry about this. We're going to have the Aquatic Center, we're going to have things happen, but...
It's like home ownership.
Yeah. I was surprised we didn't get more than one bid, but...
I agree, it's really high. Hard time with this one.
Wishes of the commission.
Well, I think, I think these things have to be done, you know, so I, I don't see a way out of it unless you want to go back for bid, but if, that's probably not going
Generate anything.
Generate any better.
And if, if experience from doing it, if we were to rebid, we would probably get a higher price from...
Well, we have, we have got one bid on this, and, you know, I think the price has gone up because this is a project that probably nobody really wants to do.
Right.
It's a more of a nuisance project, and everybody's busy out there. There's a lot of projects pushed out. It's, it's tough to find somebody to do this. My perspective on this is the old guy who's about to retire and is trying to tie up loose ends. I would like to call on Mr. Mestus to give us your opinion, because a Plan B would be something that Mr. Mestus would develop. You know, if you rebid it, I think you would have trouble attracting bids. There are some ways that we could, you know, maybe phase this into just fixing the plumbing, but Rick, I don't know if you could kind of give the commission your thoughts on this. This is kind of a team effort in, you know, discussing this with the commission. If I was the incoming city manager, I might look at that differently. I'm kind of in the, you know, let's wrap things up mode, but if I was incoming, maybe I'd look at it a little differently.
Good evening, Commission. There are, you know, a number of things that, you know, we need to look at. One of the things that, you know, was brought up is, you know, we could hire our own in-house plumber, or we can contract to a plumbing company that would be on-call for us. And so, there are other alternatives to look at this. You know, we also have to take a look at, you know, yes, all levels of government subsidize projects to, you know, whatever degree, and, you know, this would impact a Rattown business. So, there's a lot of things to take into consideration here. When we did come to our final recommendation, you know, it really boiled down to expediency. What's the fastest way to get this done? Time is money, absolutely. But one thing that we need to also look at is, you know, look at the economies of this. You know, would it be better to have either a plumber on-call all the time or to hire a plumber outright that we could send all over town doing projects?
Well, I've been over there to look at it, and it's causing more deterioration inside the wall and what it's doing. And I, I think if we don't act on it and act on it soon, that it's going to be a lot more if we, if we wait a while and go back and say, let's wait six months and see how it goes.
And that was our final recommendation, is that, you know, time is money.
I like some of those ideas for the future, though, to consider having someone we contract with, like we do with streets and other improvement projects that we can go to for basic plumbing stuff. It sounds like this has a mix of construction in addition to the plumbing, too, so I appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you. All right. The will of the commission.
I make a motion to approve. We have a motion and two seconds to approve the bid award for the Aquatic Center one-time repairs, 83, $85,350 plus tax. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, act on bid award for Schuler Theater, excuse me, loading dock. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, of course, the Schuler Theater is also a facility that you're not going to run out of projects that need to be done anytime soon. There are lots of things that, that we'd like to do at the Schuler Theater, and we've approached those generally one at a time. I think what is timely right now is something that the city staff has talked to Schuler Restoration about for several years, and that's improvements to the loading dock that is located in the alley. If you have a performer at the, at the Schuler Theater that has heavy equipment, let's say like some big speakers or electronics or we have a piano in there, but you get the idea, something, something large, there is a ramp existing in the alley, but it is very difficult to use. It's not really functional. We did hire Alpha Design, that's Dave Little, to design improvements to make that ramp more functional. It is generally steel fabrication. We accepted bids on, on Mr. Little's design, and we have two responses here. The two bids were submitted by Mark Honeyfield, doing business as Farmer and Ranchers Welding. He submitted the low bid in the amount of $24,790. I think that's notable to, to, to point out that we had a second bid from Steve Hayden Construction, $24,948. So, they're really less than $200 apart on the $24,000 bid. Gives you a little more confidence that this is the right price when you have two bidders bidding that closely together. The recommendation that you have in your packet is to award the bid to Farmers and Ranchers Welding in the amount of $24,790. That does not include the Mexico grocery state's tax. This would be funded from the non-promotional lodgers' tax funding.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve the bid award for the Schuler Theater loading dock to Mark Honeyfield DBA Farmers and Ranchers Welding for $24,790.
Motion and a second to award the bid to Mr. Honeyfield. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item N for the final time, city manager report. Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioner, I report to you on the construction of the Sugar Creek Avenue reconstruction project. That project, project is substantially complete. Final completion is expected in mid-October. The remaining work includes additional pavement markings and additional signage. Now, I'd like to point out to the public that in the eastbound lane, there is a single driving lane that exists right now, and it is striped that way. There's also a parking lane, so residents park against the curb as they did previously, but that would be on the, next to the driving lane, and then we have placed bollards in the bike lane, and so that's not for cars to pull into or park in anymore. We still have some signage and pavement markings to, to complete, and, and we'll complete those in the next several weeks. But the, the new parking strategy begins right now, and I think there's been a little confusion on that. There is also two westbound lanes existing and parking against the curb on the westbound lane. So, that's the configuration of the project. We will wrap that up in the next several weeks, and the, the pavement improvements are completed. That is a lot of square yardage of, of pavement, and I think it looks really good. That, that part came, came out great. The project is designed for additional traffic safety. We will add one more radar sign to the project. We'll relocate one of those, and so you'll constantly be reminded of your speed as you're driving on this, and a little bit of cleanup, and we'll wrap this project up. So, I wanted to give you that report. I will also add that Rob Loftus, he is our landscape architect that works for the firm P-Land. He will be in Rattown on Thursday, the 28th. He's going to, he's here to inspect the El Portal Civic Plaza site. He, he will be performing that work. He'll meet with some of the stakeholders here in the city. Thursday is a busy day. We also have the Main Street Conference online, so if you could check for your availability on that. I think it's important to support our local Main Street. That will be conducted by New Mexico Main Street. I received a notification from the New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Division of an award of grant funding under the Trails Plus program. The awards were funded to the City of Rattown in the amount of $65,748. The grant will be applied to rehabilitate the pedestrian tunnel that crosses the railroad tracks, under the railroad tracks, in the area of Rio Grande Avenue and South First Street. And our, that's, that's a great project, I In our, that's, that's a great project, I think, and the concern is we see people walking across those tracks all the time, and also we want to improve that, that access. We're seeing more of the development on First Street specifically related to outdoor recreation. This is a project that was proposed by Rattone Adventure Center and Moss Adventures. You did commit to a, a matching, matching funds in the amount of about $34,000, and so we'll be on the clock to try to push this project forward. I will also announce that Michael Ann Antonucci has worked on a funding effort and is, was successful. This is the law enforcement recruitment fund. Rattone will receive an award of $393,750 over a three-year period. So it's more in the beginning, $225,000 the first year, and then it declines to 50% of the cost of new personnel, and then 25%. And then after the three years, we're on our own as far as those new personnel, but great job, Michael Ann. With Jaden Welch and Dr. Mestis, I did attend the State Transportation Commission meeting that was held in Angel Fire on September 21st. I did address the commission, and we talked about the, the planning of Interstate 27 in New Mexico. We reminded them that they did have matching funds in there. We received positive comments from the commission and the transportation secretary on that. We also talked about the development of the 451 interchange project, and DOT staff told me they're looking at 2025 for construction of the 451 project. As we said before, that is a messy project and also a very large project. So, Mayor, I'll wrap up by saying that this is my last city commission meeting as city manager. As we've talked about in the meeting, I will head off into retirement at the end of the day on Friday, and I just want to say that, now, I started October 1st of 2014, that's almost exactly nine years, and I look back at some of the accomplishments. The city is significantly better, I think, over that period, and I really want to acknowledge the efforts of this city commission. This has been a, it's been, first of all, it's been my, my honor and my privilege to work for the community and be a part of, of an effective team and work for you commissioners. You've made my job easy, you've been very good at being the policymakers and, and being an effective commission, and you've allowed me to do my job as manager, so, and I've become friends with every one of you, and it makes it tough to leave, and I want to acknowledge your efforts. We have one of the best commissions that I can remember since I started here in 1986, so that's, I'd have to get a calculator to figure that out, but y'all have done a great job, and, and thank you. As far as the city of Rattone team, I also want to acknowledge a lot of the great people that I work for. We're more than 100 full-time employees, and I, we have some great quality people, some very dedicated people, and, and they've done a great job. This is probably not fair, but I do want to acknowledge that there were three people in the office here that were here when I got here, have been here every day, are extremely effective, and they're gonna continue on after my time, and I just want to acknowledge those people. So Desiree Truhio, our city clerk, has, has, has just been a pleasure to work with these three people, Michael Ann Antonucci, our treasurer, and Jason Phillips. Those are our three very effective people. We have, we didn't accomplish everything that's on the to-do list, the hard work will continue, but I think the, the momentum is very positive. We've got a few things done, but the opportunities for Rattone are, are there. They're, they're, they're a great opportunity for Rattone, and, and I just want to say thanks for letting me be a part of the team. So, thanks to everybody.
Mayor, may I, may I-
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Laura Brewer, and I would like to say thank you for what you have done for our city and for working with everybody that you do. I've seen the progress that Rattone has made, and I also want to commend the commissioners because I came to a lot of city commission meetings in the early 90s, in the first moment here. I've been here 30 years. And I can remember sitting there, and not one of the commissioners would report on having gone to a meeting. They, no report, no report, no report. I was absolutely shocked. They weren't even bothering to go to the meetings that they were assigned to. And I love the fact that we get full reports from you about the meetings that you attend in order to report to the public. So thank you to the commissioners, and thank you very much. Scott, we've really enjoyed having you guys.
Thank you, Laura. I really appreciate that. Ann, thank you so much. Sandra, thank you for your kind comments. I, I do, it makes my job a lot easier, you know, working with great people in the community, so, thank you all for that.
Yeah, I was gonna go down the line. Okay. Commissioner Chatterley?
Um, I, I do. I want to thank Mr. Berry for everything. You work, you've worked tirelessly, your work ethic is to be admired, and your skin is probably predank thing at this point. And I also want to thank your wife for all the hours she's been away from home, and challenge you to relax and take a vacation outside of the city of Rattone. Not that it's not wonderful to have a staycation, but appreciate you, and I really wish you the best in your retirement and to enjoy that time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Jack?
I think Laura, Ms. Chatterley said it all for me. She's, I think you missed the part, but anyway, thank you, Scott, for all you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Chavez?
I'm gonna say something about him. I didn't like him the first time I met him, whenever we came into this commission. But Scott, I'm telling you, your door has always been open to us. The five of us wouldn't be a commission if it wasn't for the way that you handled the things. We've never agreed on everything. There's been screaming matches inside his office, and, and, but we've always come out, and I don't think, but there might be maybe two times that we had not an all-five vote on this commission, because we do the work and we do it. But for you, the way you handled us and let us come in there was always open, you have my undying respect. I kind of like you now.
Thank you.
Mayor Protown?
I think he liked you to begin with.
I just, I just remember one day, early on, when we met in the, in the office, talked about anything, and Ronnie said, "Let's go out to the lobby and, and I'll, I'm gonna chew you out." And he goes out there and makes some comments and looked around to see who was looking, and that was, that was my chewing out.
Chewed him good.
I'm gonna miss your jokes. I really am.
I don't know if I'll miss the jokes.
I get them. They make sense to me. And as a neighbor, you know, coincidentally, I brought my husband, and he will volunteer to tell you what to not do on building that garage you say you're gonna build.
I'm sorry with you, Ron. Yep.
Because we, we, we know what to not do now.
It's, it's good to know that, before you jump in.
So you, you, you have-
I'll be looking you up, Ron.
Or have a cold beard.
You have made it easy for us to be a good commission, and we, I, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Protown.
And yes, I'm a little choked up, so-
Yeah.
That's it, that's all I get.
Where do we start? Came into a commission that was just chaos, man. Chaos. I go to Scott's engineering office, I happened to work for him for a little bit, so that made it easy, and I said, "Scott, I need, I need a favor. I need you to be city manager." The guy was dumb enough to do it. And then, two months later, we got thrown into a fire. And without his expertise, I can honestly say, we would not have a water supply system right now. Or would be, we'd probably be recovering about now, because it takes about 10 years. But Scott, it's been an honor. And I know, Rick, you've got big shoes to fill, but I feel confident you can do it, and you've got a commission behind you. But it's, it's been an honor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate those comments. Thank you all very much. And I'll be around. I'm here, follow me, I'll be around.
He's like a bad cold you can't get rid of.
I have to say that I honestly do tell people all the time, this is the best commission and the best group of people working for our city that I've known since I moved here.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right.
There's plenty of grass on the mesa for you cows.
Chasing some cows.
Without further ado, so I can blow my nose, this meeting is adjourned.